Twenty twenty at seven oh one P M. I will begin with the roll.
Alder Person Cronin. Alder Person Journey. Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Ryan.
Here.
Alder Person Touche will arrive later.
Great, seven people. It's quorum. We'll move on to item three, which is public comment. Mr. Sayre, did anyone register for public comment?
No, no one did.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of minutes from the June twenty second twenty twenty coming council meeting. Questions, comments, motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey, I think. Last chance for corrections on the minutes.
It was a second by Alder Cronin.
Oh, okay. Thinking about Alder Cronin. I wasn't sure. Any chance for corrections on the minutes from the last meeting or from this meeting? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the June twenty second twenty twenty come and council meeting, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Mr. Sorry, I do see Evan in the attendees list, so I'm gonna assume that's that's him and not a saboteur.
Yep, he's got his hand up.
All right, for mayor's business. I just have one thing real quick, and I don't unfortunately don't see anyone from the run of press in the audience, but if if anyone from the run presses listening on YouTube. I just want to say whenever people have feedback about city business, they should feel free to reach out to their elders or to to myself or to Mr. Sayor, you know, via email or phone or whatever. And that that. You know, I always like to hear feedback and I imagine other elders do, and and I guess what I'm saying is people shouldn't wait for like a quote unquote appropriate time. They should just if they feel like they have something they're in favor of, something they're against, something they're neutral on, but have a question. They should feel free to reach out to their elected officials because I mean, we're we're here to listen to people and represent people. But that's all I had. I'll move on to item six, which is announcements. Are there any announcements from the council? That's seeing any hands? All right, no announcements. With that, we will move on to item seven, the administrator's report. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. A few updates tonight. First of all, we have a personnel meeting tomorrow at seven A M. They'll be by Zoom on that topic. We'll be talking about the George Ford Resolution. Also talking about our training and recruiting practices and goals as a city, so I would encourage anyone to attend to watch that meeting. There will be a park, rack and forestry meeting this Wednesday, July fifteenth. And then also next Monday, there is an informational meeting that is being held by Saint Ambrose Academy for their proposal for a school in the Saint Christopher property. So I think most of the elders, if not all the elders got the invites. They'll be held virtually on teams as not a city led meeting. That's a developer neighbor for meeting in our virtual sense. So these are the meetings they typically host in person, but because of COVID, it's being held virtually.
Sorry, when was that meeting again?
It's gonna be next Monday.
At six thirty.
At six thirty. Thank you.
Great.
And that's on Microsoft Teams. We do have some code updates. You know, we had had plans to reopen City Hall in the Public Works Building due to the recent spike in COVID cases. Both those buildings remain closed to the public for for the foreseeable future. We'll continue to monitor the data and make changes as necessary. The library has modified their hours. The building is now closed from ten to twelve each day. That allows staff to clean and restock the bookshelves. There was a lot of concerns about the interactions of the restocking staff and patrons coming in to pick up materials. And on a precautionary precautions, we decided to kind of have that to our window during the day. The nine to ten hour window every more every day will remain available to the seniors and high risk individuals. The senior center is currently offering foot care services to seniors on an appointment basis only. We are looking at potentially additional options in the future, but that is the only offer offering that is currently available. Any senior looking to do that, we need to make an appointment at the senior center. Splash pad and Fireman's Park is very popular just because of the heat that we've had this year. The beach is capped at one hundred and twenty five people. We do now have an online registration system that people now need to use to sign up to use the beach. We were hitting the capacity on a when it was hot on a regular enough basis that we we put that in place to hopefully stagger out the the attendance coming into the facility. We're going to continue to kind of monitor that situation and we'll make adjustments as as appropriate, but that is now in place. And information on that can be found on the Fireman's Park Facebook page and the city website. The city's park program, which is pretty popular throughout the community with people with kids, we did shut that down for two weeks. We had a participant that had a positive COVID test. So that park program is closed down for another week. It will restart hopefully next week. So there's been a slight change just because we did have that participant test positive. So out of once again, being just cautious, we we closed the whole program down for two weeks and which probably wasn't a bad idea because it was hot anyways. When it gets that hot, we typically cancel because of the potential heat advisories for kids. So but that program was closed for for two weeks there. With that, that's all I had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
I got I got two questions about the parks, and then I'll turn it over to Alder Cronin, the parks group thing. I guess, is there anything being done in the future to prevent potential spread? I mean, like, I wouldn't want to deny anyone anyone outdoor activities at this time, but I do kind of worry about having, you know, facilitating the gathering of groups.
So we we group the kids by the color coded each day. So if you go to Harriet Park or if you go in the morning or afternoon or wherever parks that's run at. The kids are kind of grouped into the same kids every single day. So we tried to kind of shrink the bubble, try to shrink that circle. They're playing non contact games as well. So if you drive by on a any given morning outside my office here. When they're going, I see the kids playing noodle tag. So they have the noodles instead of playing normal touch tag. They use the noodles to take people. So trying to use as much kind of precaution with with that, they have hand sanitizer available on a regular basis. If there's any inclement weather, we'll cancel proactively because if it rains, all the kids gather under the shelter. So typically, if there's a threat of rain or storms, we'll just cancel it just to be to be safe on a caution as well. We do have a lot of overlap with siblings at potentially different parks. We also have a lot of overlap that some of our counselors date one another. So to be cautious, you know, we that's why we shut the whole program down instead of just shutting down one park where this was had occurred. But I know I know Casey W has taken a lot of precautions this year of just trying to find games and activities where the kids aren't having that contact that we normally would see at the playground program. I'm canceling it. It'd be impossible, but we've we've done the best we we could. This is the first time it's happened so far, which knock on wood, hopefully is the last.
Yeah, I guess my follow up is has Dane County Public Health any contact tracing? I'd be curious. Because like I know there's a lot of unknowns about the disease right now, but everyone seems to think that or all indications point to like outdoor being very low risk. And as long as everyone stays outdoor in the sun and doesn't get too close or engage in high risk behaviors, that it's about as safe as things can be made right now.
I I'm not aware of anybody being contract traced. I am aware of a couple situations of just where a counselor's siblings or direct family member had COVID. And once they were tested positive, obviously, they stayed home. But I'm not aware of any contract tracing going back into the program.
Okay, Alder Cronin.
In terms of the Saint Ambrose Academy proposal, is it my understanding that the city is actually doing a traffic analysis with this? And if that is the case, do we have any idea when that might be completed?
Sorry, from button. Um, so yes, they did to complete a traffic analysis. They are still still being reviewed. I think it is has not been finalized. But we've kind of reached the point where we felt it was prudent to take the information and the and the the request to the the plan commission kind of for feedback. When will be done? I think the thought process here being now we want to take it the plan commission, get gets give the plan commission thoughts on access, use, traffic, etc. Before we really finalize that, because I think we've reached that critical junction of needing that feedback. Because it will impact the site plan, it will impact the T I A, the traffic impact analysis. So I don't know when it would be done, most likely after that initial plan commission review with the plan commission, it kind of agrees with what they're showing. If the plan commission doesn't agree with what's being shown, they'll have to go back and make changes to it. So we I know we continue to look at it, but it's it's a work in progress until we kind of get through that first line commission meeting.
Will that be on the next plan commission agenda?
Correct. It will be on the August. Sorry, I'm clicking too many buttons. It will be on the the August third, I believe, plan commission agenda. That would be an initial review before the plan commission.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Sayre? Seeing no further questions, we will move on to item eight, which is engineers report. Ms. Fisher.
So for the well six pumping station construction, testing and pumping of the well and electrical controls began on June twenty ninth. M G N E has been delayed on the natural gas installation, which has slowed progress of H vac testing. Asphalt paving, finished carpentry and well startup is anticipated for mid to late July. For the Verona area, high school construction traffic improvements, the majority of the work items have been completed. Work will continue on finishing punch list and some rework items throughout the project areas. The West Verona Avenue signals at West End Circle and Nine Mound Road are planned to be operational as of last Friday. Traffic will continue on the inside lane of West Verona Avenue until punch list items are complete. Other project roads will be can will be opening in the coming weeks with some possible lane restrictions to complete punch list and finishing items. For the county highway P D construction Woods Road to County Highway M, traffic is currently split that is placed on their appropriate side and median lane closures are in place. During the week of July thirteenth, which is this week, the site electric, the concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk, the bike path and the landscaping are all scheduled to be completed. During the week of July twentieth, which is next week, the asphalt milling, surface paving, permanent paint and permanent signs are scheduled to be completed for the median lanes. Then traffic will be switched to utilize the median lane so that work can be completed in the outside lanes. For Liberty Park Phase Four Construction, the curb and sidewalk has been poured as of the end of the day of July eighth, which was last week. There are some minor portions of the sidewalk that may be delayed a few days due to last minute modifications. Paving is projected to be complete by the end of July. For the twenty twenty asphalt rehabilitation rehabilitation project, that was Northern Lights low road paving between Staff Park A and Staff Park B is now complete. Contract closeout is all that remains. The twenty twenty chip seal project is complete. And for Kettle Creek North Phase Three, the letter of credit reduction recommendation has been provided to the city. There's a private storm sewer pipe that needs to be installed before lots five and six and phase three can be released for building permits. For the woods at Cathedral Point Phase One, mass grading and detention basin construction has started. A preconstruction conference for the for the underground public utilities is scheduled for tomorrow. And for the two major design projects going on in the city right now, for the East Side Interceptor Design, ninety percent construction plans have been reviewed by city staff. Easement acquisition has commenced with property owners with offers being sent out the last week of June. Permit applications have been submitted to the D N R. And we are awaiting the permit from the D N R. Coordination with the with Dane County and I C H Trail have occurred and accommodations and improvements are being included with the project. And finally, for the Lincoln Street Stormwater Facility Design, final design is progressing on the pond. Pond design and modeling, pond embankment, design and permitting and corresponding hydraulic and water quality modeling. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineers report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, which is committee reports. First up under nine A, we have the finance committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty seven thousand, eleven dollars and thirty one cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp.
Yes, for the sake of discussion, Mr. Mayor, there's a number of payments here. First, we had an assessor's payment, which is a part of the reassessment for forty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. We had our EMS payment, which was the second half of the operating budget. That's three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars. We have the chip seal roads contracts for two hundred and sixteen, four hundred and twenty two dollars. And then also we have the SCADA upgrades for the rehab well for a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And then finally, the M M S D pay payment, excuse me, in the amount of seventy eight thousand, seven dollars. I should note, this is also a payment for the prior set of bills that we approved in the last meeting from June twenty second. So it's a combination of both.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to nine B, which is plant commission. Alder Cole.
Thank you. First up is nine B one, discussion and possible action regarding resolution number R dash twenty dash zero twenty eight. Approving a precise implementation plan amendment to allow three live work units located at one forty two Paola Street. The proposed PIP amendment would change would change approximately three thousand, five square feet of commercial space to three live work units at one forty two Paola Street. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on July sixth, twenty twenty, and discussed the project. Comments from the Plan Commission included discussion about approving live work units and the units being solely residential units. Surprised to learn that the commercial portion of the property has remained vacant since opening in twenty eighteen. Agreement that the location is good for potential commercial uses with trail access. Glad to learn there is potential for a commercial on a lower level of the property. And thought three live work units are a good experiment for the city. The Plan Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval approval of the P I P amendment.
I think if that explanation was an intention to move of.
Sorry, making a motion to approve resolution regarding this year. Yeah.
Okay, motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey, this time, I think. Motion before the body. Oh, Mr. Sayre.
One thing I forgot to put in that report was there were two recommended conditions of regarding hours of operation for those businesses from six A M to ten P M. And then second, restricting the uses in those areas to neighborhood commercials. That wasn't the resolution, but I forgot to put that in the summary, so I apologize for that.
And that was the intention with the motion to include the conditions?
Yes, it is.
And that was the understanding of the second as well?
Yes.
Okay, so motion with the two conditions specified with this by Mr. Sayre before the body. Questions, comments on this motion? Alder Posey, then Alder Cole.
I just wanted to say that when I saw this proposal, I thought it was a fantastic use for this property. I know I've seen it sit vacant since it was finished. And thought this was a really great idea, and especially the current climate, but I think in general, it really is a great thing to introduce to our community, and it'll be really interesting to see that if these fill and how they do.
Alder Cole.
Was gonna say along the same lines as Alder Posey, but a couple of things we had discussed at Plan Commission was it could be used for like an artist, like gallery, where, you know, the artist then has their own separate space and has they have their own entrance. So or like somebody has a small business and you aren't coming through like somebody's kitchen or bedroom into their workspace. They'll have a separate entrance. So I think it is a really creative way to use this space and for the, you know, developer and management company to still be able to, you know, make use of the space and and get some money out of it without it just sitting vacant all the time. So it's gonna be interesting. I'm excited to see what happens.
Motion before the body. Are there questions or comments? I'll just add, yeah, I agree with both what Alder Posey and Alder Cole said. I think, you know, the the kind of small scale rentable home office areas are really present an opportunity for people to get started small. And I also think, you know, it's going to have a lesser impact on the neighborhood too, which which I think is a nice, you know, kind of side effect. But seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero two eight, approving a precise implementation plan amendment to allow three live work units located at one forty two Paola Street? With the conditions noted by Mr. Sayre, say aye. Oppose, no? That motion passes. Alder Cole.
Sorry. I have a dog situation, sorry. Okay, next is nine B two, and this is just a discussion regarding a concept plan review of a planned unit development for a proposed four story seventy nine unit apartment building with nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen square feet of commercial space located at four ten and four twenty West Verona Avenue. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development concept plan that would allow for the construction of a four story seventy nine unit apartment building with ninety three nineteen square feet of commercial located at four ten and four twenty West Verona. The building would contain affordable and market rate units with one, two and three bedrooms. The Plan Commission discussed the project on July sixth, twenty twenty. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the workforce affordable units, support for three bedroom units. Questions regarding the design and location for the commercial units along Rita Avenue instead of along West Verona Avenue. Concerns for parking the site with residents and commercial users, concerns that there may be too much commercial in the city and support for pedestrian and bicycle accessibility. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No, no formal motion is required as this is just the conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation. I will. I'm gonna call myself first real quick. I got a question for Mr. Sayre and then one for the applicant if the applicant is here, which I think they are. Mr. Sayre, I got a question from a constituent who is concerned about potential overflow parking from this site spilling into the residential neighborhoods. And I'm wondering if you could could talk about that, the amount of parking spots that are currently planned for the site.
Sure. Bear with me for one second here. So on the screen before you is the site plan for it. We've got the commercial area that kind of up but Rita and West Run Avenue. And then as you transition to the east, you have the kind of the more of the residential type component to it. And it is a four story project, so you would have some residential units that would be above that commercial space as well. Parking itself is if there's twenty six, excuse me, twelve stalls kind of this back area here, this would obviously be for the commercial, especially if the bank use and their employees. You'd have fifteen parking spaces kind of in between this kind of trivial that goes in between. And then twenty six surface stall spaces here as well, too. As of right now, they have eighty underground parking spaces. They have a total of fifty three on the surface, eighty underground, and that gives them a total of one hundred and thirty three parking spaces. We haven't done a complete kind of hard analysis on on the parking. I think it, you know, we don't do that at this stage just because of we want to see how where the project's going before we really dive into it. You know, I think that's something we're going to be taking a look at. That was obviously also discussed by the Plan Commission as well, just making sure the site has sufficient parking. I think initially, they're probably in the ballpark. You know, we're trying. We're trying to balance these as best we can to not overpark the property, but also not underpark with the concern, obviously, of that parking spilling into the neighborhood. So I don't have a strong answer for that person yet, but I mean, it's an item that is always high on our list, especially when you have a site like this that is immediately adjacent to a residential area. So that's something that will definitely keep a very close eye on. The project does have some, I forget how many exactly, but it's got all the all the units in the first floor here are three bedroom units. So that's obviously they've got a lot of higher parking demand than typically a studio or one bedroom. So we'll have to keep that in mind as well as we we take a look at this, but we'll review it and as it goes forward and keep a keep tabs on it.
Great. And then my second question was a question for the applicant. This came up at Plan Commission, but I think it's useful to talk about at the council, too, which is the item we just discussed where a commercial retail area stayed basically unoccupied for two years. You know, how how will this project be different? Because there's, you know, some some commercial plan for the first floor. How is how is this project different? And and how will you fill? Fill that so we don't end up with an empty space?
Sorry, Mayor, can you repeat the beginning of that question? I was getting promoted. Hello, everyone.
Well, we just talked about the issue that the velocity development on Paola had had and how they basically had a retail area or commercial area open for two years. And so how will, you know, the situation be different for your development? And and how will it be fall and not just, you know, end up with another empty bit of retail on the first floor?
Sure. Well, one of the things that we have going for us is the fact that Anchor Bank, I guess Old National Bank now, has committed to stay on the site with a twenty year lease with options to take them out thirty five to forty years, I believe, if I can remember correctly. And so we'll have a hard tenant there on the corner, you know, nationally accredited tenant into the building. And the way that the tax credit program works is the investors and the tax credits, as well as the lenders, are only going to give us credit for the tenant that's in place. So the fact that we have a lease signed with Old National will allow us to count that income towards the the pro forma of the project. The other retail space, they'll discount to zero. And so that is a benefit to our project because we need to make this project work financially based on the housing itself. And it will allow us to, you know, rent that retail space at a more affordable level, hopefully to, you know, local businesses, you know, things along those lines where, you know, if if there's were a market rate project, you might see you know, the developer putting seventy five percent of that retail space in at, you know, thirty dollars a square foot in order to get the the loans to make the project to work. Whereas, you know, we will have that discount and have the opportunity to, you know, lease it to the right tenants. That's a good fit for the neighborhood. You know, I had heard the concerns over the parking. I think we're at about one point seven stalls per unit and, you know, we have a good amount of, you know, one bedrooms as well as a handful of twos and threes. But, you know, Old National Bank will be a day user and, you know, at multifamily sites, there's a lot of opportunities for folks to park in the parking lot, in the garage, especially the, you know, the employees can park in the garage during the day if they're a day user, and then the tenants would park there at night. So we will continue to work with the city on the level of parking. We'd like to see a few more spots there as well. That might make the commercial a little bit more you know, viable, you know, more a little bit more attractive. But I think that we have a really good chance to fill our our commercial space, given that we have that, you know, that that hard corner tenant in place.
Thanks. I guess as long as we have the applicant up, any questions for the applicant from the council? Alder Cronin.
It's more of a comment. I have also been contacted by constituents who are concerned about the parking. And if my calculations are correct from what you submitted to the council, thirty nine of those units will be either two or three bedrooms. So I I really do want to make sure that we get the parking right because overflow parking into the neighborhoods behind the development are not going to be welcomed. The other question that I have is for the two and three bedroom units, especially the market rate or the affordable housing units, would they have priority to be assigned more parking? And if so, does that affect the And if so, does that affect the cost of their rental?
So the parking will not be included in the rent and they'll have a choice whether or not they want to park. You know, on the surface lots, which typically is a free parking spot, or if they would like to pay for parking spots below the building. There will be a one to one ratio of parking below the building. And so I think tenants will have the option. If we, you know, run into an issue where, you know, no one is choosing to park their car underneath the building. You know, we'd have to relook at that, but there's usually a nominal amount if someone wants to park a car in the secure underground parking where people would have a choice to do that or park on the surface lot. Again, I think we have about fifty three spaces of parking, um surface parking available uh for tenants. So you know, I we we believe in our experience and we've developed a handful of these projects around the state that that's sufficient parking. But again, we're we're hoping to squeeze out a few more parking spaces as well.
Uh any other uh questions for the applicant? Uh Alder Posey.
Um so what was I heard that this might have been discussed at Plan Commission as well, but the reason that the commercial is placed on Rita versus being frontage on West Verona is I'm just curious what the purpose was for that layout.
Yeah, there's a a couple of reasons. The first reason is that Wida requires that sixteen percent of all the units be three bedroom units located on the first floor with private entrances. Um it's a, it's a feature that they have, um you know, decided is a benefit to, you know, larger family units to have that first floor access so they can you know, not only have access, you know, to their unit from right outside, but also the interior hallway. So that's one thing, but the really the main driver and you know, the reason why we ended up with this configuration is because we have the bank as our um main tenant, and the bank has the two drive through lanes. And so we had a couple of choices. How do we get that drive through into the banks? We can get them on board to do the redevelopment. And it 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 took us to a a design that brought that drive through right underneath the building, which wouldn't have been my first choice. But apparently our architect, you know, has done this a handful of times and it's worked really, really well. It's this, that that's uh setup also allowed us to not have the driveway basically go around the, you know, the tenant portion of the building. So you're not having someone constantly, you know, going through the teller lines, making deposits and then driving through tenants who are, you know, getting in and out of the cars as they go, you know, you know, to and from their apartments.
Thank you. I I do have another question as well. So what are you thinking? Uh I'm gonna give you a little thought of mine first before I ask the question, I realize. So one, a concern I have right now is we're starting to build up for our West Road Avenue where it's development with high rise, well, high rise being four story apartment buildings and again and again and again. And I'm really concerned about having it feel like you're just driving through a corridor, essentially a driveway of apartment buildings when you're driving through one of our main roads here in town. That's not kind of the feeling of what I think we've all grown to know and love about Verona. So I think design wise and especially with things like setbacks from the road, I think maybe that could be accomplished. Um and I'd love to hear you what you are thinking as far as that goes.
Well, we're open to feedback and and ideas. Definitely, we're in the concept planning stages. One of the things that we're, uh we've already incorporated in our development are step backs on all three sides of the building. So if you look at the the east side of of Verona Ave, there's a step back there. There's a step back at the corner of Rita and Verona Avenue, and there's another step back um on the north side at Rita um to help you make that four story look a little bit smaller um as a as a, you know, a height, um you know, make it smaller in terms of height goes. But you know, we're, we are open to other um other, you know, feedback and and trying to make that, you know, make that work in the neighborhood. I understand, I understand the comments definitely and the concern.
Thank you, because that's my biggest having seen this and seeing, and I'm interested to see what else you come up with because there's definitely a need, there's a need for the level of housing you're proposing. So I don't want to be somebody who's sitting here saying, no, I don't like it. But I'm excited to see what you do to sort of massage it into the neighborhood so it really fits and helps it to feel like the home that we all know and love.
Yeah, definitely. You know, we're, we're trying to ba- balance that uh, you know, the location of the the building where it's up closer to the street versus, you know, up closer to the homes that align to the north. And so we're, we're gonna be working, you know, with um you and Miss and Mr. Kemp to make sure that we get that right. And it works with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Uh Alder Cole.
I'm just wondering, Sean, I know we discussed this at the Plan Commission meeting, if you could talk a little bit about the potential for, you know, like a restaurant or something. Because I know one of the concerns was we have so much commercial. I know you had discussed, you know, possibly still keeping like a restaurant in that space because that is something that was people had really wanted.
Yeah, we've, we've heard that from a handful of folks um that they'd like to see, you know, some sort of use there include, you know, the the current liquor license that's in place. We, we've continued our conversations with the the owners of classics. I know Doc is retiring. That's one of the reasons why we started, you know, looking at the this site to begin with. But we will approach them to see if they'd like to stay. The middle uh portion of that commercial space is actually a pretty large space, it's about four thousand square feet to be perfect for a food uh you know, bar type operator. Um I think we have to balance that with the parking situation. And so, you know, I really want to figure out if we can get a few more stalls um somewhere on the, you know, on the uh the site itself. We'll work with our, you know, engineer and stormwater issues that we might have. But I'd like to get some more stalls so we can open that option up to, you know, keep a food, a food option on the site.
Uh other questions uh for the applicant? Uh I have one more. You mentioned some uh example sites. Um could you uh could you list one or two or or email Adam and he could forward to the council later?
Examples of?
Uh like other projects that you've done like that are similar, like, you know, uh this was more in regards of the the parking and some of the other stuff. Um just, you know, some example projects that might be similar that you could point.
Oh yeah, with with parking ratios?
Yeah.
Sure, definitely. Yep, we can do that.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Uh see no other hands? Uh thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Uh we are still on the uh general discussion. Um so thoughts, questions for staff? Uh Alder Kemp, then Alder Journey, then Alder Cronin.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I I like the general concept of of this uh proposal. I have to agree with um Alder Posey in that um, you know, I am starting to get a little concerned about what we're seeing down West Road Avenue. With that being said, I you know, it's kind of like balancing um over versus, you know, getting some density in the downtown. That corridor is gonna have some some good commercial space eventually, you know, running all the way through up to the high school. So uh I've said this to a couple of people before, my idea of the new downtown might just move a little bit away from where it is now. And hopefully we can make that as walkable and as bikeable as possible for our citizens. I think that will be really good. So if they can do a good job of, you know, using setbacks to make it not feel like it's just again, a corridor of apartment buildings, I think that's good. I also have to echo, um I would like to try and keep a a restaurant in that space. I know that we don't control that. You know, losing the classic that that building has been there, you know, as long as I can remember. But more importantly, I think if you ever go in there uh on a Friday, you see a lot of the same people congregating. It's a place where a lot of the locals like to hang out. Um and it's, it's good food. So it'd be great if we could get something similar to that. Um however, you know, we don't control that. I I I wouldn't be as opposed to, you know, another national chain, to be very honest. That's what happened on the other end of East Rome Avenue. Um I'd like to try and stay away from that if we could. But otherwise, I think it's a good proposal. Um I think it it fulfills a need that we have, and I look forward to seeing what the developer is gonna do with it.
Uh Alder Journey, then Alder Cronin.
So I agree with um um all of the comments that have been made. I think it's a good proposal, but the same concern um is we don't want a Wall Street of of uh large apartment buildings um going down the street. And then also um that uh consideration is made so that the neighborhood uh behind it is not burdened uh with parking issues. Um and then also I think it's a very positive that um Anchor Bank is going in there for the period of time they've contracted with. Thank you.
Uh Alder Cronin.
So I actually have a question. Um and I don't know, Adam or Katie, if you could uh speak to this. What are the requirements if there was a restaurant that went in there that had a liquor license? I'm assuming that factors into how much parking they need. Is that correct? Or are required to have?
Uh Mr. Sayre.
It wouldn't be a a liquor license trigger, it'd be the use itself. So if a restaurant went in there, whether it has that liquor license or not, we would treat that the same. It'd still be what's called an indoor commercial entertainment land use. And that's based upon, the parking would be based upon a number of seats for that space. Um that's the one challenge with some of these buildings, you know, any building, any project we put up, as we try to balance not overparking it, but also not underparking it. And you never really know what the tenants are gonna be because they're always constantly changing. But there'd be different parking requirements depending on the specific use.
Okay, the follow up question would be in the age of COVID where we have seen um certain establishments be able to use their parking to provide outdoor seating and other businesses that don't have that option. What would that would be the situation it for this development because there's so much shared parking for all of the establishments? Would that just be off the table?
I like the off the table, it'd be very difficult. I mean, that's the one thing you we'll, we'll see from COVID. The second thing that we've already seen on our development side is you're gonna hear a lot more about drive throughs, pickup windows, and any way you can get stuff to people without having them physically go into the building. But this, it'd be difficult because you have the kind of drive through area for the tellers. It'd be difficult to probably shut that down and 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 to use that. And you have so much common overlapping space. It 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 would be more challenging than than others. I agree.
Uh other questions or comments on the project? Uh Alder Journey.
So Alder Cronin raised an interesting issue and not that this comment would um influence this project, but it will be interesting to see going forward if architects and uh businesses now um try to provide more out outside space and um pick up space um for their businesses.
I mean, I'll just add for myself, I'm not the biggest drive through fan, but I I mean, considering the fact that I I I, my understanding is that there's never been a successful vaccine developed in under four years. Uh we could be living with uh COVID for a long time. Um and so, you know, i- it is good to think, you know, we wouldn't want to 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 just lock ourselves into a certain kind of development just because of the current moment. On the other hand, this could potentially extend out for years. So I think it's something we need to all all keep in mind. Uh last chance for questions or comments on this project, which is of course, this item is uh feedback only. Uh Mr. Sayre, was there any additional questions uh city staff had?
Oh, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other hands, uh we will move on to um nine B three. Uh Alder Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um this is just a discussion regarding a concept plan review of a planned unit development for proposed one hundred and sixty one thousand fifty square foot wholesale building and twenty four fuel pumps located at the southwest corner of County Highway M and Thousand Oaks Trail. The applicant is proposing a PewDie concept plan that would allow for the construction of approximately one hundred and sixty one thousand fifty square foot Costco building and fuel facility with a maximum of twenty four pumping locations in the southwest corner of County Highway M and Thousand Oaks Trail in the Verona Technology Park. Due to the size of the building, this building is reviewed following the PewDie planning process, which includes a concept plan, a general development plan, and a precise implementation plan. The Plan Commission discussed the project on July sixth, twenty twenty. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for a Costco as a destination for the city that has the ability to support neighboring communities, concerns regarding the amount of impervious surface for the entire site, support for solar panels in the future, discussions regarding transit options, parking and potential co- potential conflicts for the Wisconsin brewery and Costco, pedestrian connectivity, and would a vacant store agreement work for a fueling station? The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required as this is just the conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh questions or comments on this item? Uh Alder Wright.
Um I've got a ton of feedback about this particular project. I think the overwhelming sentiment is in favor of the Costco. And so there's that. I think some of the concerns I have, I I very much uh would advocate for the idea of having solar panels put in at during the build. It sounded like Alder Cole, you said in in the future. So it sounds like that would be something that they would be looking at down the track.
Right. Uh this is, this is a question that I had asked that they hadn't initially planned on it just because of the pricing and costs and stuff like that, but that the roof was built so it could withstand, you know, future load. Whereas, you know, if you built it in the wrong way, you couldn't put solar panels on even if you change your mind. So but I I I a hundred percent share your comment that, you know, I I understand they have, there's a calculation to it, but wow, it would be real nice if they could use that right now.
Yep. Um the other feedback that I had was uh well, another personal thing and and feedback is I think uh I questioned the value of the the gas pumps. There's already a quick trip across the street. This thing's not gonna be built for a couple of years. We're supposed to be getting off fossil fuel. Climate change is real. We have extremely limited time to deal with that. I'd rather not see the pumps personally, but so and then uh the other feedback was just around traffic uh getting in and out of there and would there be uh amendments to the to the roads coming in and out to alleviate that, I assume there would be. And then concern about uh, well, there was a particular concern about the tree, which I gather is going to be spared, the three hundred year old oak tree, which is planned to be spared, so.
They are going to be doing a traffic analysis around that. Um I believe Mr. Sayre had mentioned that because there could potentially be a lot more traffic, especially with the um, you know, the restaurants across the street and everything. So I know they are gonna be doing that, right, Mr. Sayre?
Yeah, they've done, they've done some traffic counts already. And I know we got the the comment from someone about well, traffic should be lower because of COVID. So we have actually added a factor into that analysis. So we did our counts and actually then bumped the number up slightly because of of COVID as well, just to readjust with people not driving as much. So that's currently underway and uh we're gonna be working through it um and identifying what improvements are necessary.
Uh Alder Cronin.
So I too have had a lot of positive feedback from constituents who are excited about the prospect of a Costco coming. Uh I'm especially pleased in that um they do provide family supporting jobs with benefits, which is good. Uh but the concerns that I have um are definitely echoed with what was discussed at the Plan Commission, which is it's a lot of impervious surface for parking. And if there is any way we can get some of that underground and reduce the size of that parking. Uh the other concern that I do have is that connectivity between the hotel across the way and the restaurants. Right now, the only way as is proposed to go back and forth would be if you have a car. I mean, I really can't see anybody on a bicycle feeling comfortable crossing the road there, even with the the traffic lights that have been installed. Um and lastly, I will also echo the, I don't know that we need twenty four gas pumps um with quick trip right across the street as well. So those are my concerns for the project, but for the most part, I'm very pleased that this could be an opportunity for Verona.
Hello? Alder Ricky.
Thanks. I echo the environmentally conscious um comments that were already made and would encourage um installation of solar panels upon building as well as consideration for underground parking. I don't know if that's a possibility to decrease the impervious surface. And then um I wonder if uh rain gardens can be considered And then, um, I wonder if, uh, rain gardens can be considered in addition or instead of ponds, for water infiltration, um, and just to think outside of the box for any other environmentally friendly building considerations that would be in keeping with our city's, um, environmental resolution.
Alder Tushay.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, like a lot of you, I've heard a lot of positive feedback. Some people discouraging it, just, uh, worrying about the impact on other businesses in Verona. On the impervious surface, uh, part, I mean, I actually work, uh, close to the Costco in Middleton, and, uh, yeah, there's a lot of pavement there. I know, uh, the cost of underground parking is very expensive. I, I'm, I know there are alternate technologies for paving that allow the surface to take in groundwater and all that other stuff, so I, I think I would like to hear more creative solutions from the Costco group. Uh, the gas pumps, honestly, twenty-four pumps don't bother me. Um, I sit in line at Costco fairly often to get my gas. I, I, it, my concerns about QuickTrip aren't as big as others, just because on a personal level, QuickTrip is almost thirty cents more a gallon than, uh, Costco, and it makes me wonder how come it's so much more expensive, which is part of why I go to Costco for my gas, and I'm sure I've heard the same from others. So having some competition there may be a good thing. Um, other than that, I'm, I'm excited to hear they're, they're coming. Thank you.
Additional, uh, feedback, uh, from the council? Uh, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I, again, I haven't had one, um, one bad comment or concern yet about Costco. Um, I think it would be a good addition chiefly because of how they treat their employees. Uh, Alder Cronin already said that, that's a, that's a huge thing. There's gonna be a lot of really, you know, solid jobs, uh, and it's a company that treats their employees with dignity and respect. Um, the healthcare that they offer is great. So I rea- I really like, um, that we're getting a business here that will be able to employ quite a few people here. Uh, hopefully, a lot of them will be people that live in the city. Um, and there'll be jobs that are, uh, you know, offer basic human dignity and a, and a good solid living wage. So, um, when I, when I saw that, obviously, like a lot of us, we shop there, you know, my family's in there. Um, the only thing, the only negative thing I might have to say is dealing with, uh, all of the samples when you're trying to get around there. But, uh, other, other than that, I have no issues, and I think it's a, a good company. It would be a good fit in Verona.
Um, I guess if I could, I'll just reiterate kind of some of the stuff I said at, at the Plan Commission, but yeah, the, like other people have said, the, the, the jobs thing, the fact that it can be family-supporting and, and a commitment, you know, hire at least some people from the area, I think is really good. Um, I think that we want to work on bike and, uh, head connections for people who want to walk or bike, you know, in the area, and I understand the comments about, you know, potentially some of the, the, the big roads are gonna kind of cut off people from walking and biking. But there's other spots where people, um, work and they might want to walk, uh, to Costco, so I think we should try to encourage that as much as possible. Um, in line with kind of what Alder Ricky said about, um, rain gardens, I would love to see, and I know, I know this is super early in the process, um, as far as it goes, but I would love to see, uh, uh, some very heavy landscaping, I think. Um, some trees can help, you know, break up some of the parking, and they can also help, you know, handle stormwater. And I think, I think in general, people tend to like to be around trees, uh, as simplistic as that sounds. And then, yeah, I, 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 you know, I, I could take it or leave it, leave the gas, uh, pump site. I, 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 I would hope that it would be built to stringent safety standards. As we all know here, we're dealing with potentially two contaminated sites on West Front Avenue because of, uh, uh, gas, uh, that was improperly stored. Um, and that's why, uh, the, the, uh, old truck stop is, hasn't been developed yet. Um, and I know, you know, this is nothing against Costcos, or not saying anything that they've done, it's just, you know, you deal with that a couple of times and you see the kind of mo- amount of money that it'll take to fix it, and it makes you paranoid and, uh, suspicious, so. Uh, but in general, yeah, I think I've heard a ton of positive feedback. There are a lot of Verona residents who have Costco memberships. Um, and I think, I think a lot of people would find it a tremendous convenience as well, and I think, you know, there, there's a lot of work the city's gonna have to be going forward if, if we move forward with this, um, just on traffic and, and getting all that stuff to work, but I think it's a positive proposal for the city. Uh, other, uh, questions or comments or other kinds of feedback? Uh, Mr. Sarah, anything, uh, you'd like other people to opine on? Alright, uh, anything further from, uh, Plan Commission, uh, Alder Cole?
Well, thank you, that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item, uh, ten, new business. Uh, we have, just have one thing, ten A, a discussion and possible action regarding the, uh, bar and restaurant COVID nineteen support program proposal, uh, Mr. Sarah.
Uh, thank you. On July first, two thousand and twenty, Dane County issued emergency order number seven that limits gatherings at bars and restaurants. This new order has created some financial challenges for local bars and restaurants. In response to the order, staff has drafted a bar and restaurant COVID nineteen support program. The criteria for the program are the same as the previous grant program except for the following. One, the maximum grant amount is four thousand dollars. Two, must be classified as a bar or restaurant as defined in the Dane County order. And three, the business or applicant has not previously, previously been awarded, a city awarded, a city of Verona COVID nineteen grant. The city has approximately thirty-three bars and restaurants, eight were previously awarded City of Verona COVID nineteen grant funds. Um, and staff is recommending making a hundred thousand dollars in funds available for this grant program. So, uh, the goal here is, is some of the bars and restaurants, obviously with the, the caps in place, they're, they're struggling, and for, I know, I've had some conversations with Mayor Diaz and, and Alder Person Kemp, uh, just trying to put possibly some options out there for, uh, some of these places that, uh, are significantly hampered by the, by these caps, so. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Alder Cronin.
Is there any way we can prioritize awarding funds to businesses that have either very little or no ability to have outdoor seating?
I think it'd be tough. I, I mean, and I just, I, I say that to the extent of, you mean, oh, some of these places have parking lots, there's all, there's a handful, and I, you know, the one that comes to mind, obviously, with very limited is, you have Toot and Kate's, obviously, that, that's a big one. Um, I, I'm just trying to think as, as I'm rambling here. Uh, Salazar already had a grant, Tubaloo had a grant, the last go-around. Hop House has outdoor seating, but they had a grant. The, about the only one that'd be very limited would be Toot and Kate's, and they still do have outdoor seating, it's just not, it's not enough to kind of replace what's lost now. It'd be, it'd be, it'd be tough to really quantify that. I mean, you'd have to almost say, I, I don't know, I, I'd have to give some thought.
Uh, Alder Kemp.
Uh, well, I'm, I was just sitting here thinking about it, I don't know if it's gonna be a, an issue as much as we may think, because, um, number of businesses have already received a grant, so that, you know, kind of takes, peels them off the list if I'm not mistaken. And then, um, any remaining, there, I think there's a reasonable pool of money, and given the range that we would, you know, be granting, just about anyone that wanted to get one that qualified should have access to an amount that's reasonable for them, I think, but I could be, I could be wrong.
Uh, Mr. Sarah, any, uh, cause you looked at the numbers a little more closely.
Yeah, we, we did. I mean, like, like I said, we had eight from last time. Off the top of my head, I can think of two that I'm pretty sure are probably gonna apply for it. We had one restaurant last time that said they, they qualify for it, for it, but they were concerned about taking money from other people in, in more need, because they were doing takeout at that point. So I know they passed on it, so that, that could be a possible third one. Um, you know, the criteria says if they're, if they're a franchise, they don't have any local franchise su- support. Um, so there's that criteria still in place as well. I mean, I, I think it is gonna be a limited number, but I, I, I don't know, I don't know how, I haven't, I haven't talked to all these businesses personally, so I don't know exactly where, where, where they're at. I don't know if that helps or not, but the thought process being here is we have about thirty-three businesses, eight of which haven't, eight of which applied already, that gets us to twenty-five, twenty-five times four is a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we're gonna hit that, but I, I could be wrong too, but, um, that's how we got to a hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, Alder Posey.
Thanks. Um, I'm really happy to see this, these funds come back up again. I know that when we did the first round of things, we knew that this would still be there and available, so I'm glad that we're taking this step to move forward with this. Um, I'm really good with what we've discussed so far. I think the only question I have is looking, at other potential industries that we haven't touched on yet. Um, I know the opportunity has been there for them, but I think about youth-serving organizations that aren't able to run programs this summer necessarily, because they can't get figured out, can't get staff, whatever it might be. Um, and that's another area and industry that our community really does need, uh, especially during summer. And if they aren't here next summer, when everybody's hopefully back up and running, it could be an issue. Um, so it's something that I really just hope that we can look at, and if anybody else has heard, I, I know I haven't been, but it's a question I've had in my mind, is are we just not hearing from them, um, whether it's childcare or summer programs for youth? Um, thank you. Or after school too, I would throw that in there, because as we get to fall, those are also programs that families need and dual-income families need. And if we don't have them, it's gonna be an issue.
Uh, other, uh, questions or comments? Uh, did we lose Alder Ricky, by the way?
Her, her wifi dropped out.
Okay. Uh, I guess, uh, alright, and back, alright. Uh, any other, uh, questions, comments, or motions on this item? Uh, Mr. Sarah.
So i- if this is approved, the intent would be, we'd have a pretty short, quick turnaround of applications, and we, the goal would be to take these back to the council two weeks from today for approval, like we do with the last round, that'd be the, the, the goal, so. I think the deadline is next Monday or Tuesday, and then we do a quick review and then, uh, get them back to the council and hopefully get the checks out quick.
Questions, comments, uh, motions? Uh, Alder Posey.
First, a question real quick. Um, what would the process be for putting this information out? Cause I know sometimes I've heard about people not hearing things, and so, that would be great to know that.
Yeah, the, the last one, we, we pushed out pretty heavily through the chamber. I know we don't get all, hit all the members there, but that's where we pushed it out. I believe we also posted it on our Facebook page as well. Uh, the chamber has twenty-some members who are restaurants or bars, so we don't hit them all, but we hit a good chunk of them. Um, I can reach the Verona Press as well and see if they can run something in there too.
Uh, Alder Ryan.
So I gotta just confirm the details, so it's up to four thousand, and the timeline would be two weeks from today, the deadline, is that right, to apply?
Uh, no, the deadline to apply would be July twentieth at four PM. Uh, we'd have our internal review of staff of just making sure they meet the qualifications. And then, um, then it would go to council on the twenty-seventh for final approval.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Hmm, questions, comments, uh, motions? Uh, Alder Posey and Alder Cole.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to move ahead with their approve the bar and restaurant COVID nineteen support program with the timeline that we have discussed, and, uh, hmm, yeah, timeline we have discussed and the guidelines we have laid out here.
Motion by Alder Posey, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Alder Cole, I think. Uh, anything to add, Alder Posey?
Not at the time.
Okay, I'll just throw in my quick two cents, yeah, I think this is, we're trying, you know, as a city, trying to do what we can to help our businesses. We understand this is, a lot of this stuff is out of, uh, out of our control, out of the restaurant and bars' control, and I think, you know, like I said earlier in the meeting, I think some of this stuff is gonna be ongoing, and people are gonna have to deal with an economic downturn and, and deal with potentially people being a little squeamish about being in enclosed indoor spaces with other people. And so I hope all the restaurants, you know, use the opportunity that, that hopefully we're giving them, that they, you know, kind of get them to the next month or two, but then they, you know, or help them out. And so then they can get to how they're gonna deal with whatever comes next, or if this becomes an ongoing thing, you know, I mean, it, all, I'm, I'm sure everyone's already thought of all this stuff, carryout, social distancing, outdoor dining, alternative revenue streams, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so I just, you know, like I said, I hope this helps and, and, and I hope people are prepared for, uh, it to last for a while. That being said, motion before the body, uh, questions, comments, on motion? Seeing no further, uh, discussion? All those in favor of approving the bar and restaurant COVID nineteen support program, um, with the guidelines and timeline, uh, noted, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Uh, we're on item eleven adjournment, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin, I think. Um, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And we are adjourned at, uh, eight oh six PM, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.